We'll call to order the Monday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three Anderson Township Zoning Commission. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Donovan, could you roll please?
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Goethe?
Yes. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Does we do have enough? If Mr. Lewis, any questions or any comments on the minutes? Mr. Eliff?
No, I read through them and they looked okay to me.
Great. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll move to approve the presented minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Mr. Lewis, second? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Goethe?
Yes. Case two dash twenty-two, Mr. Jury, could you present the case, please? Oh, I need to read this first. Please bear with me, I have a book to read. Okay, upon hearing the case for the flooring of commission, first, we need to outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application, the applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testified before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that this application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time after being recognized by the chairperson. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chairperson. If anyone in opposition is represented by attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As previously stated, all persons wishing to testify whether for or against the application may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening please stand and raise your right hand and swear to or affirm? You swear that to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Jury, could you please submit the staff summary for case two dash twenty twenty, PUD major adjustment?
Thank you. The applicant is Gillian Mullner of Hills Properties, and she's representing Vantage Anderson LLC, property owner. Location is at fourteen forty-five Townsend Way, and the request is for the approval of a major adjustment to PUD. And again, this was case two twenty twenty PUD. This is to allow four temporary signs that exceed the size and the timeframe permitted to be installed. The property itself was approved in May, on May of eighteen twenty twenty. In case two twenty twenty PUD, the zoning commission approved a multifamily development with two hundred twenty-four units, which is the Vantage. It's under construction now, obviously. It's a multi-level parking garage with one-story serving and a symmetrical parking lot, and then with overflow parking for the Anderson Center. And then construction is expected to be finished, or at least occupancy starting in twenty twenty-five. This is a caged map of the site in question. This is Five Mile Road here going to the north, Town Center Way, and then the private drive that comes down to the Anderson Center. This is an aerial view of the property. This was taken in early twenty twenty-three, so this is when construction was just underway. Again, you can see Town Center Way to the south of the site. These are the Tri-Health office buildings, Anderson Center, the Mercy Health Plex, and then a single-family subdivision on the west side of Five Mile. This is a topography map of the site in question. And then this was information submitted by the applicant of the proposed locations of the temporary signs, some of which have been installed and some have not. The first one here is a now leasing banner that is actually on the temporary construction fencing. And the size of that one, get my notes here, is a hundred and fifty square feet. Then this sign here, which would be on the north side of the building, this is proposed at a hundred and forty square feet. This sign is proposed at a hundred and twenty square feet. And then one on this corner, as you're coming downtown Townsend Way to Anderson Center Way, is two hundred and forty square feet. So these are the elevation drawings that were submitted. This is the one sign here that can be seen from Five Mile Road, and somewhat also faces the Anderson Center. This sign here would be facing, this is on the south elevation, this is one at a hundred and twenty square feet. This is as you're going downtown Townsend Way. One of the main entrances is where the leasing office would be and then into the courtyard. Five Mile is off of the corner here. This is the proposed sign, as you can see, we'll have site photos, that one is installed. This is Townsend Way coming out, and then Five Mile, the proposed sign would be up here in this corner. And then this is the north elevation, again, we've already seen this one, but this would be seen from, it's on the north elevation, but as you're traveling south on Five Mile Road, you could see it, or as you're leaving the Anderson Center. So these are some of the site photos we took. This is the one that is already installed, again, Townsend Way heading toward the north. It's just a closer view of that of that sign there. And we're going to come down Five Mile. This is the sign that's on the construction fencing. This sign's actually in the right-of-way, the construction fencing is in the right-of-way of Five Mile Road. That's a closer shot of that sign. This is a shot from the Anderson Center looking back of signs proposed in this general vicinity. So the purpose of a PUD is to allow flexibility in development, including increase in density, which isn't permitted, increase of density in the E zoning district, and then also flexibility in the design of the development of the site. Once a site is a PUD, other variations can be considered, considering temporary signage. So in the total signage that's being requested by the applicant, is six hundred and fifty square feet of signage. Our temporary sign regulations, we have two options. One is a sign in lieu of a sign, but that, and a sign in lieu of a sign is a temporary banner that is put up while your signs are in order, or if a sign was damaged, or if it's being replaced, you know, if you're upgrading your signage and you need a temporary sign. That's called a sign in lieu of a sign, and the definition of that, though, is only for signings, or for buildings that are already completed. So this one really falls into the other category of temporary signs. And each property is allowed up to thirty-two square feet with permits. Permits are good for twelve-day periods, and we can issue up to four permits a year, so forty-eight days. Neither of those categories really work for this situation, what they're trying to achieve. They said that they are wanting to keep the temporary signs for their leasing period, or at least until their leasing stability, and they can probably explain that a little bit better than I can, up and through the end of twenty twenty-four, or until they reach their stability timeframe. So a variance would be needed from that or approval, and that would be a major adjustment to the PUD. So we looked at this a couple of different ways, and this is in the findings here on this slide. Number one is that it is a much larger building than what we typically see in the township. And in this particular situation, for wall signage, since it is in the retail zoning district and not in a residential zoning district, they do meet the criteria for the bonus formula, so they could actually have up to five hundred square feet of wall signage, once the building is complete. And this would be permanent wall signage that could be split on multiple facades, but the maximum would be five hundred square feet. They are asking for six hundred and fifty square feet in temporary signage. Number two, the applicant says that the signs will be installed until they reach their leasing stabilization or through the end of twenty twenty-four. When we've had similar requests, not necessarily for this larger signs, but for new developments, single-family subdivisions, that have, you know, lots for sale, we've had requests before the board for PUDs of single-family subdivisions. And a year to eighteen months has been a consistent request from developers. Number three, the temporary sign that is attached to the fence, the construction fence, that is in the right-of-way. Temporary signage is not permitted in the county, Hamilton County right-of-way. So we couldn't issue a permit for that regardless. That would have to come through the Hamilton County Engineer's Office. We did talk to the county engineer today, we had a regularly scheduled meeting, and I did bring this up, and they were not supportive of signage in the right-of-way. So it doesn't mean that a request can't be made to them for a temporary sign, but the township cannot issue a permit for a temporary sign in the right-of-way. So those are the three items. There are fifteen standards to be considered when looking at a PUD plan. Not all those are applicable to this particular request, because it's not a new PUD, but those are staff's findings. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you would like.
Thank you, Ms. Jury. Mr. Lewis, any questions of Mr. Jury and staff?
Yeah, Paul, the sign is in the right-of-way. You're saying you can't give a certificate or permit, and the county right now is saying they're not interested. What's the recourse to get it removed to the right-of-way?
I mean, the county engineer would request them to remove it, yes. The township has also been authorized by the county engineer to remove signs in the right-of-way, but we coordinate that, obviously, we wouldn't necessarily go and take that one.
Mr. Lewis, any questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Eliff. There's so many people.
You can call me Mr. Lewis, that's okay. The time limit aside of a maximum of forty-eight days, if we just applied the temporary sign rate as written, they could have, a sign max is at thirty-two square feet?
Thirty-two, this, thirty-two square feet is generally what a property could have. There is,
Okay, I, let me finish, okay, I'm just clarifying that. But on this building, because it's got the frontages, three of them I see here exceeding four hundred square feet, under the rules as written, it would be allowed three signs of thirty-two square feet?
We would use the two public street frontages, so we would use Townsend Way and Five Mile. But yes, two of the three frontages, they do have more than four hundred feet.
So they could put two, if we, so if they put two at thirty-two square feet?
Correct, they could have two on each, one on, two on Five Mile, two on.
So what we're looking at here is if we want to revise the PUD to just, in this particular case, authorize something larger?
Correct.
Okay.
And for a longer timeframe.
In longer timeframe.
Anything else, Mr. Eliff slash Lewis? Thank you. Any question, Paul, for the fence being in the right-of-way? Is there any issues with that, either through the township or the county?
It would be the county, it's in their right-of-way, they have not.
Expressed.
Expressed.
All right.
It's been out for about a year, I would say, a little bit longer, but the county has not said anything.
Now, if the applicant would like to come up, state their name, address, and affiliation of the case, and present their case to the commission?
You can just go ahead.
I'm Gillian Mullner. I'm the applicant for Hills Properties on behalf of Vantage.
Can you state your address?
One four four five Town Center Way. And then, I mean, I guess as far as the statement, I mean, it's really just what we've already discussed, as far as the signage. You know, we do feel like it's very valid for our leasing efforts. It has already driven some prospects to come in and visit us, as far as the residents here in Anderson, kind of being able to educate them on like what stage we're at. They've been seeing us in construction for a while, and not everybody really knows at what trigger point to come in, and they can actually start making reservations. So we've really felt that this signage will really assist us in being able to get the property fully occupied.
Mr. Lewis, any questions?
Yeah, you mentioned about stabilization point.
Yeah.
What is the magic number?
I mean, for us, it's usually around ninety, ninety-five percent leased, which is why sometimes it's hard to predict exactly how long, you know, that will take, especially with our construction timeframes. So that's why, for us, it could either be till we hit stabilization, or through the end of next year, which we feel like would give us a really sufficient amount of time before our permanent signage comes into.
Yeah, you know, if you're ninety-five percent, if you're mature properties, they probably don't hit that on a regular basis.
I mean, yes and no. I mean, with us delivering brand-new products, like obviously our, our goal, you know, as a business, is to get as many people, you know, living in the property as quickly as possible. So that does help us in assistance for, you know, getting it leased as soon as possible. I know some other businesses or other properties may complete a building or complete a property entirely and then allow people to move in, but we've just found that this is the most successful way for us to do it, is to do it on the early side with pre-leasing.
Personally, I remember having calendar dates, and I stopped, or maybe asked for extensions, if appropriate, rather than having somebody along the number that we can't control and can't really follow, but we all have calendars, so.
So saying the end of twenty twenty-four, like twelve thirty-one of twenty-four would be?
I'm telling you, my personal opinion.
Yeah.
We're not really negotiating a date yet, but.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Maybe it feels different.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes, my question is on your marketing and trying to get people tuned in to this building is available or going, coming online. How relevant anymore is like wall signage and banners like this as opposed to just your online efforts and stuff?
It is still pretty valid for us, and, you know, we felt especially for the demographic that we're trying to reach, you know, here at Anderson Township. We have a lot of homeowners that want to stay in the township and are seeking to sell their homes to downsize, to be able to stay in the areas that they're familiar with and to stay in the community. So we've actually, I would say, the majority of our people that have reached out to call us are people that have driven by and seen this, you know, seen stuff like that.
I got you. So Hills has done a lot of apartment buildings over the years. Is it normal for the banners just to go up and not address the zoning staff to get permits, or to discuss it with them in advance?
It is, and so, you know, we sincerely apologize, like, because to be honest, we do have construction going on at two other locations right now. We are building in Oakley and also West Chester Township, and we did install very similar-sized banners at those properties without any approval. And so it was, it was truly just like a mistake on our end for not realizing that that needed to go through that process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
What's the anticipated completion of construction?
You know, I would say probably the end of twenty twenty-four, spring of twenty twenty-five.
Would be construction completion, okay.
Well, you have to watch the time before it's a hundred percent complete?
Yes. Our goal is to move people in. We have different zones in the building, we will be moving in as we complete each section.
So when's the first zone, sort of?
We are shooting for May-June as the first move-in timeframe.
And you brought up permanent signs, which is sort of on my question list anyway.
Yeah.
You know, there is plans for permanent signs.
Yes.
Do you know what sort of locations on the building, similar to the temporary sign locations?
I believe that we had that outlined, like, in our original approval, so we hadn't included it on this one, but there is a monument sign that's going to be at the main entrance, like facing the town center. And then I believe we'll have another sign on the north side. Yeah, sorry. I didn't memorize where all of like the, you know, our permanent stuff is going, but I.
The permanent signs is going to say the Vantage, or, you know, sort of howdy brand.
We use, yeah, our logo is what's typical.
That's all the questions anyone?
Back to Paul, on the five hundred square feet, they would never have to come back for that? They're allowed that adding up to five hundred square feet, is that correct?
Right, they wouldn't need approval from the zoning commission, they still need zoning certificates and review.
But the five hundred is?
That would be the maximum.
Max, right now, they're over that four, but they scale back or reduce signage. But there's no time duration for the five hundred?
No, not for the permanent signs, and that's wall signage. They're permitted a freestanding sign as well, like the monument sign. But, and the reason with, with wall signage, so we have a bonus formula, it was really intended for larger shopping centers that, like Kroger, you know, they have one, well, they have two entrances, but if you have a large, one, one store that had multiple tenants that wanted multiple signs, I think Kroger's the best example. With shopping centers that have multiple entrances, they're based off of the facade for the specific tenant, but, you know, with Kroger, it has Starbucks, it has Kroger, it has Kroger, some bank in there, or a pharmacy. So the bonus formula was meant because they have such a much larger facade. This is in a retail zoning district, so the bonus formula would kick in for wall signage.
Okay, but their address is going to be?
Townsend Way.
Townsend Way, so having any numbers, which I didn't see in there anyway, on Five Mile doesn't do any good, like we had up at the corner with the building with the.
Right, and, right, but if they did, that would just be considered part of the wall sign.
Right, but it doesn't do any good, it's not a five-mile address, right, put your number on that side.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? See scared faces. Again, say your name and address.
My name is Sarah Hendricks, and I'll use our office address, it's forty-nine oh one Hunt Road in Blue Ash, four five two four two. Just wanted to add a couple things in to addition of what Gillian said. And while we look at how our industry does signage, there's a lot of new communities being built. One thing that we pride ourselves on is the aesthetic of the signage matching the product that we're putting in the market. We are not people that would ask for variances to do billboard signage, or things that float in the air, or things like that. We feel that the aesthetic of these truly does match the product that we're building, and we do not want it to be a distraction amongst everything else that's there around it. The other thing, if I may, address the question you asked about the permanent signage. I know that the company that we are hiring to design and do that signage does have plans to come before the group and show their plans and ask for permission. And again, we do apologize for how this came about, we are very sorry.
Mr. Eliff, any question?
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing no one?
Name is Sarah Kitzmiller. I live at eighteen twenty-eight Stonehouse Lane, so I do live here in the township. As soon as the job came open for this, I was so excited to be part of it, especially because I've lived here my whole thirty-three years of life, and I've seen the town center just kind of have some ebbs and flows, and I think that this project will really pump some life back into it. And I think that our successful lease-up of this would just contribute to that sooner. That's, that's all I'd like to say. Thanks.
Would anyone like to speak opposed? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and amongst the commission, discuss the application and the evidence presented. So, Mr. Lewis, we'll start with you.
No, I'm not opposed to some marketing signs that are temporary, I just think we need to put some boundaries around it, sizing, number, and duration. So if we can, long as I come up with something.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Lewis on this one for sure. I agree with also his comment about having a, some specificity on an end date. I agree with the staff recommendation to remove the one out of the right-of-way. And looking at the drawings, it is a fairly sizable building, so even though these are larger than a normal temporary sign, they're not really out of scale on this building, I didn't think. And the staff said this is similar to other requests they get, and also this is specific to the PUD, so I don't think we're really setting any kind of substantial precedent. And then lastly, when I look at, at the numbers, they're asking for six hundred and fifty, but if you take that one out of the right-of-way, it's five hundred, which is in line with what a normal signage might be on that building. So I, I think on this one, I'd be, you know, in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, hearing the construction sort of timeline that was discussed, you know, I think end of twenty twenty-four seems like a realistic sort of duration, end of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Knowing that there's going to be permanent signs, I guess, I'd like to see maybe you have a condition that when the permanent sign is installed, that the branding gets removed from the temporary signs, to sort of balance everything back out?
Yeah, be swapped out.
Exactly. But, you know, that permanent sign may be installed in, you know, June or something at the first occupancy sort of timeframe. But that's the only sort of other condition I could think of. You know, not having temporary signage plus permanent signings, do we have two thousand square feet of sign up there, you know? But like I said, the duration, the need, sort of makes sense, you know, seeing the one that looks really big from when you're right there, but as Paul's picture, and as I drove around the town center, you know, when you're far away, it doesn't look massive. The one on the temporary fence, you know, I think, my opinion is, since we cannot regulate that either, you know, say it has to be removed, or a permit from the county has to be obtained within another duration, you know, maybe it's thirty days.
Paul, with your presentation, the right-of-way ones at the one hundred and fifty square feet.
Correct, yes.
So that's my thoughts. Any other thoughts? Someone like to make a motion?
Commissioner Lewis?
All right. So in case two dash twenty twenty, they requested major adjustment to the planned unit development for temporary signage. I make a motion that the zoning commission approve the request with the following modifications, that the sign that is placed in the right-of-way be removed.
that the sign that is placed in the right-of-way be removed within one week, or alternatively, I'm going to just say removed within one week. I'm not going to worry about a permit for that. He said they didn't want to give. So, that has to be removed with one week. There is a hard deadline of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for removal of all the temporary signage from the building, and at such time as the permanent signage might appear, then any branding on the temporary signage would need to be removed.
Let's refrain from branding. Can we not use branding in the condition? Is that could be considered content-based?
Yeah, you're right about that. So, at the time that the permanent signs go up, that the temporary signage be removed? Is that what you guys are thinking? Okay, let's go.
December thirty-first of...
Yep.
Forty twenty-four.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in any event.
Right. Do you recall that the square footage, the three that we're allowing?
The three that we are allowing are indicated sign number two at a hundred and forty square feet, indicated sign number three at a hundred and twenty square feet, and indicated sign number four at two hundred and forty square feet.
Sarah, you got that?
Do we have a second?
I'll start.
Okay. With that, Ms. Donovan, can you please call?
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gartner?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, with that, any new business?
Not that we know of, and right now, we haven't received any applications for December. We will keep you posted.
December eighteenth?
Yeah. We'll let you know once the deadline passes, if we receive any.
It's like the first piece of December. Yeah. Well, have a good holiday.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.